So.
Oh, that'll last. Another wave is coming through or not?
I don't think so. I looked at the radar and I didn't see one behind it.
Alright, so. We're live on YouTube.
Oh.
Hi Wayne, how are you?
How are you David?
We got power, basement isn't flooded, so I'm happy. How about you?
Well, we, we really missed out on it, you know, it wasn't that bad.
Yeah. Patty, you guys okay?
Yep, yep. Still here.
That's good.
There's a lot of, a lot of noise.
I was wondering what would happen if the board meeting got, you know, disjointed because of the storm. From a legal standpoint, you continue with it, you report it through the minutes, and you note that it was disjointed as a result of the storm. Well, what if some of us were like gone? How would that, how would that be? Well, if, if the quorum was eliminated, anything that happened in the meeting after the quorum was eliminated would be invalid. Oh. If there was a quorum that remained, and the quorum could be heard, then that would remain valid, and there's nothing on the agenda tonight that requires a supermajority vote, so. The board meeting could- It's an interesting question, is like if one or two board members got doinked off of the Zoom meeting, and there were still four left, what would happen? I think the mayor could decide how to handle that and decide whether to go forward or not. But fortunately Wayne, that's a hypothetical question. Well, I mean, I'm a hypothetical guy. I know you are. And I gave you a hypothetical answer because- That's why I love you so much. There's nothing clear in the law with regard to that issue, but I think that's the stronger opinion. Always nice talking to you Jim. Well, you don't have to look at me tonight, so it's even better. Oh, I don't know, that's- Storm came, storm came. Yeah, the storm came through here like the apocalypse, it was pretty bad.
So you have no power?
Uh, our power's out Patty.
Yeah.
So I've got the laptop agenda up because I downloaded it beforehand, and I'm on my phone. My phone's got about an eighty percent charge, so.
Okay, it means we better be quick and limit-
If, if I drop off, you'll know the reason why. Well, you know how it goes, whoever's gone, that's their turn to be in the barrel. Yep. Um, excuse me, uh, no, I don't want to get off the phone, I'm gonna leave my plumber's calling. I'm gonna stay on the line though, I think. He's gonna tell you that the water's running in the wrong direction. Yeah, well, on Saturday, we had a, an issue with a backup of a, a large sewer pipe in the house, and he was gonna come over and fix it this afternoon, but I don't think that's gonna happen. I have to reschedule. Well, the grass is watered, that's a good- And it's about time, boy, I'll tell you, it was getting dry out there, wasn't it? Yeah.
We got cracks in the lawn over here, so hopefully those redistribute themselves a little bit.
Uh huh. You got some nice foliage around your house there. You should be in a garden club David.
Uh, we are, we're both in the garden club. Patty, uh, hosts the garden walk.
Oh man, your house looks really nice.
So, well, it's a labor of love, so it should look even better next year, so.
Hi Andy.
How are you?
Hi Mayor.
I'm fine.
Hi Jim.
Mayor, how are you?
Good.
I see the flag behind you Mayor. Is that the one we're gonna?
That's the one we always use.
That's the one, huh?
It's my wooden flag. Happy haircut Sean.
Thank you.
Aren't you glad, aren't you glad you're in the profession you're in Sean?
Oh yeah. Yeah, it's almost a loaded question.
Loved by all.
Right.
Hey, you could be in the city of Chicago.
That's true, amen to that.
Alright, yeah, there's no ocean between us and Chicago though, so.
That's true.
So we're not that far away, and obviously we've had some visitors.
Well Wayne, I tell you, my theory is I don't go east of eighty-three.
I like that idea.
Yeah.
Are they really having problems in Chicago?
You think?
Are they? I mean, I, I saw something on social media, but I didn't know if it was true or not. But it was nothing, nothing in the paper.
Oh, you haven't been one?
Major looting in Chicago last night again.
Again, okay. You never know if it's true or if it's make believe, those videos-
It's true. The magnificent mile is not so magnificent.
They were giving free alcohol away at Benny's.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, after they got done with Best Buy and some of the high-end wine wineries. It, it, it's really disconcerting, it's, it's out of hand, out of hand.
Chief, Mr. Odell.
Hi Andy.
Audi.
We had Barb and Patrick, or, I'm sorry, Barb and Bruce.
Lee.
Lee. How does, uh, any damage in the town Jeff?
Not that I've heard of, so.
Just a lot of leaves in the parking lots.
Elsewhere in the area, but not, not here.
Good.
Small tree, small branch by, uh, in the back here by your spot. Good thing you wouldn't park there.
Absolutely. Barb?
I'm here.
Hey, we're just waiting on Lee, correct? I do have a five-thirty start time people, and it is five-thirty-one, so let's call the meeting to order. Stand for the Fudge Allegiance please.
Trusty Berkshire.
Here.
Trusty Devitt.
Yeah.
Trusty Domke.
I'm here.
Trusty Poleski.
Here.
Trusty Sarno.
Here.
Trusty Trejo.
He is here, technology, he's, they're getting that ready. And then I'd like to ask for a motion for the presentation of this evening's agenda.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to propose that we remove or postpone item six A two from the agenda, seeing that, that we should be looking at that to align with our strategic plan, specifically strategic priority, community engagement, and the strategic initiatives therein. And we should move forward after we have followed that strategic priority and aligned with Zurich envisioned.
Trusty Berkshire, can, this is Jim Knippen, can we characterize that as a motion?
Yes, I'm sorry if I, I'm sorry, yes, I motion to move, re, to postpone said item.
Thank you.
Six A two.
I'll second that.
Clerk, then I would need a roll call.
Right, um, should we restate the motion for trustee Trejo who just was able to join us?
If he can hear us, yes.
Lee's here, sorry, I had technical difficulties getting in the meeting.
Right, we have a motion by trustee Berkshire and a second by trustee Devitt to remove or postpone item six A two from the agenda, um, to date more, at time more in aligned with the village board's strategic planning.
Specifically, I would like to, to clarify, I would like to ensure that we follow what we had identified as a strategic priority for community engagement, and follow those strategic initiatives prior to making a proposal or a recommendation or a motion to put said home rule onto a ballot. So, I think we need to align with Roselle envisioned before we put the villages and residents in a situation outside of those strategic priorities.
Floor's open for discussion, was there anybody else that wanted to make a comment?
So just, just for clarity, removing six A two is the proposal?
Yes.
Consideration of an, of a resolution to place a question on the ballot.
Got it.
The board should pursue.
Thank you.
See anybody else, a roll call ma'am clerk.
Trusty Berkshire.
Yes.
Just Devitt.
Hi.
Trusty Trejo.
Nay.
Trusty Domke.
Nay.
Trusty Poleski.
No.
Trusty Sarno.
Aye.
Aye, as in yes?
Yes.
Okay, Mayor Maglio.
Okay. Um, I would say we're leaving it, yeah.
So that's a no?
No.
Yes. Wait, wait a minute, under, under, under the law, we have to vote, um, yes or no, or aye or nay, um, just to make it clear, and right now it's ambiguous.
Okay, so it was a no.
So the item then remains on the agenda, the original, um, underlying motion remains on the table. It's subject to discussion, um, and a vote, does not need to be remade because it's already there.
Hey, I have a motion by trustee Donke, but no second to approve the prepared agenda still, wait. I'm sorry, who was that, Lee?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, um, trustee Domke.
Hi. I'm voting on the agenda, right?
Correct.
Hi. Prove the agenda is prepared.
As prepared.
Hi.
Trusty Trejo.
Aye.
Trusty Sarno.
Aye.
Trusty Berkshire.
No.
Trusty Devitt.
No.
Trusty Poleski.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, moving on to public comment. Due to the COVID-nineteen pandemic, the village board will be meeting virtually, as we are, and will be streamlined on the villages YouTube. Anyone who wants to make a comment? Forward it in. We have any comments this evening, ma'am clerk?
Yes, we do. Our first comment is from Rebecca Whitak. Her comment is, please, please, for the love of God, stop the train whistles. I can't sleep with my bedroom window open at one AM and I'm awake because of the whistle. I have to be up at four AM. Between the lack of sleep and the loss of hearing, I am ready to sue someone. Our second public comment is from Elaine Pisacaro, Roselle resident. She says, I believe this is the wrong time to consider home rule. There isn't adequate time to effectively inform the public of benefits and/or disadvantages, and then get a referendum on the November third ballot, especially considering meeting limitations and early voting options. I understand home rule brings benefits and could bring revenue to the village, but it can also add additional burden on the homeowner by new taxes and corporate increases that would be passed on to the consumer. Proposing home rule at this time doesn't seem the best way to solve the Airbnb problem. Our third public comment is from Beth McShane, a Roselle resident. My husband and I believe Roselle should not allow short-term rentals unless there is a specific regional event, i.e. golf tournament, band competitions, et cetera.
We didn't hear what you said.
Okay, you want me to read that one again?
Yes.
This one is from Beth McShane, and she states, my husband and I believe Roselle should not allow short-term rentals unless there is a specific regional event, i.e. golf tournaments, band competitions, et cetera. Our fourth public comment is from Diana Eckert, and she states her name and her cell phone number, and states that she is in favor of home rule. And our last public comment, number five, is from Sarah Bruno, Roselle resident. After reviewing the discussion from the previous board media regarding home rule, home rentals, et cetera, I hope the village moves swiftly to develop an ordinance that re, the ability for private home rentals in Roselle. I believe it would be prudent to restrict home rentals to a minimum of three nights to avoid potential situations similar to the unfortunate events that took place on Picton. With that said, I am interested to learn more about home rule and how it may assist the village in developing even more specific ordinances to alleviate some of the concerns regarding home rentals. In addition to these concerns, it sounds like home rule may be helpful for other things, for example, the gas tax that could potentially eliminate vehicle stickers that Lee Trejo mentioned as a scenario in your last meeting. I believe it would be worthwhile to test the waters with the referendum with proper community education and see where the vote would land in November. In final thought on home rental ordinances, I ha, I have is that I don't believe that the village should eliminate the ability to completely to rent a private home. It is a nice source of income for some homeowners during PGA tournament, and it would be right to completely limit residents' abilities to earn this income. But I would like to see the village take steps to make restrictions to help our community be as safe as possible. And that's all of our public comment.
Officials and staff report.
I am first to consider these committees' reports regarding home rule and regulation of short-term rental.
Jeff, did you want to start that?
Yeah, and I prepared the memo for the board on behalf of the two committees that met per the direction of the board at the last meeting on July twenty-seventh. I merely stated what occurred on July fourteenth and July twenty-seventh, and then I tried to highlight in bullets what each committee had presented. Uh, I prepared a matrix of some common uses of home rule and the differences between authorities of non-home rule and home rule committees. So there, I think it's really up to you and the board to discuss where you want to go with this next.
Who wanted to go first? Bruce, you gotta unmute yourself please.
So, um, at this particular moment, I am proposing, since we don't have the committee of a whole any longer, that the zoning and regulation committee move forward with proposing various ordinances, uh, three of them actually, and that I've asked staff to draft those for the August twenty-fourth meeting. That we then look at those as immediate actions that we can take place with regards to home, um, with regards to short-term rental. And then we then can meet next week as a committee just to kind of review those drafts and any other ideas they may have, and then have enough time to present for, um, a motion on the twenty-fourth.
Okay. Jeff?
Yeah, I, I would say, um, if it boils down to, or I would be doing a text amendment to the zoning ordinance, that would require a public hearing. So depending on how the board wants to do a public hearing, attorney Knippen can opine, um, but that generally would be pushed through the Planning and Zoning Commission with the recommendation.
Ordinarily that, yeah, ordinarily, uh, that's the case. Um, that is the typical procedure that's followed. In rare circumstances, the village board has conducted those hearings. Uh, whether or not the village board can conduct a hearing when it has a planning and zoning commission, um, in its, in existence, is an interesting question. I don't want to, I don't want to say this, but I'm gonna say it because it's true. Um, if the community was a home rule community, it's clear that the village board could proceed directly to conduct the home, uh, the, uh, hearing on the zoning amendments itself. Um, otherwise, I think the stronger argument is that it should go through the Planning and Zoning Commission first. I'd also like to make another clarification here, um, and this is certainly not a criticism of anything or anybody at this point, however. Um, the motion that's pending on the table, um, is for just receipt of the committee report, um, and, um, discussion as to whether or not, um, what should be done with the committee report. Bruce, Bruce's motion, um, doesn't affect the committee report in terms of its receipt. It's more of a, uh, an argument as to why the village should not do it. Um, and, um, you know, I make no comment as to whether that is or is not appropriate because it's purely a policy issue, um, at this point. But in terms of classic procedure under Robert's Rules of Order, I think Bruce's position is an argument as to why the village should not adopt it as opposed to receipt in consideration of the report, um, and, and, and not being a motion that is on the table as a motion.
I, I'm sorry Jim, that wasn't my intent. I was asked to report out as a committee member, so I was reporting out. So I'm reporting out, that's what I'd like, that's what I think we should do, um, based on the committees, you know, evaluating and review of that, that situation, so.
And I think, I, I think Bruce, the only reason I said what it said is because I think at the beginning of your comments, um, you said, I would motion. And, and that's the only reason I said what I said. Um, you know, um, I understood that fundamentally what you were saying is, no, we shouldn't do this. Um, you know, we shouldn't approve, um, the proposal to put this on the, uh, agenda. Um, I just wanted to clarify that from a procedural standpoint, obviously, because this is a very, very important issue from the village's standpoint, and I want the record to be clean.
Okay, so then I want to make sure I understand what you're saying, because I, I'm, I'm confused. My motion earlier on was to remove the, the, the next step, which is to vote after the committees have discussed. This particular situation, if I use the word motion, my, my, my error. I was simply reporting out on our considerations from the committee, and I would think that our, what, what I would like to do is our next steps as that committee is to move forward with whatever we need to do to update ordinances and the like. If that means that the planning and zoning committee needs to put something together, or if we need to do a public hearing, so be it. But that's what I would like for us as a committee, our findings, and the fact that we can do something immediately is where I was trying to report out as.
Thank you, and I think that's an excellent clarification for the record Bruce, and, and that resolves any issue, um, that I had. Thank you.
David?
So I just have a, a question for Jeffman, just a, a comment. Um, with the fact that we need to have the, the zoning commission get together to have a public hearing, what does that put us as far as the timeline to have something that we can actually vote on? Because it sounds like we would have to review the ordinances the twenty-fourth, see if we are okay with that going forward to the public hearing. And then that group would have to meet, are we talking about the first or second meeting for, uh, September to actually approve something?
It would probably be the second meeting, because if you could hold a planning and zoning committee meeting, that would be, you have to have public hearing notice, which is fifteen days, I believe Jim, and then-
That's correct.
Schedule the meeting number one, so it'd probably be back to the board at the second meeting in September.
Okay, so we're talking about a month and a half, we can vote on it. Okay, thank you. And then, in general, with the report that we received, I'm really in favor of a lot of these. I think we absolutely need to have a zoning application done. I think what's key to me is distinguishing between an owner-occupied rental versus something that's an entire home with no supervision. I think there's a different risk factor there. I think it's also important for us to take into account, which has not been demonstrated in the report yet, the number of units being rented by an individual. Someone that's renting their own premise as a single unit versus someone who might own an apartment complex does not have leases signed, so they might decide, I have twenty units, I can flip these to be short-term rentals to fill my gap. That's a very different situation, and I would almost want our ordinances and our zoning application to reflect that, so that way we have more control or more restrictions in place in those situations, because to me, there's different things we might want to do in that regard. Um, so that would be my only thing that I would like to see kind of captured as we move forward, from my personal opinion.
Bruce, I think that's fine, yeah, and I, I guess, I would like to understand from, um, from Jim, what options and alternatives do we have to accelerate this? It's unfortunate that two weeks have gone by, almost three weeks have gone by, and now I'm just learning of the fact that we have to do public hearings, and now I'm waiting until September to get something that, and I'm saying Patrick, I'm, I'm, I apologize Patrick, I'm using me because I don't want to put words in your mouth.
No.
As the committee, as a committee on that, um, I'd like to understand what options we have, because we've wasted three weeks.
And then, I was gonna say Bruce, I would like to expedite that, and if I did not want to go through P and Z, could we bring it right back to the board, Mr. Knippen?
We can certainly try, and there's a legal argument that that's appropriate, and there's a legal argument that that may not be appropriate. However, it's my opinion that it probably is appropriate, and the reason I say that is because the Planning and Zoning Commission is a recommending body. The village board makes the ultimate determination, and as a consequence in that circumstance, it seems to me that taking it directly to the village board for purposes of that hearing, public hearing, um, is something that can be justified under the law.
Okay. So can I, that would be, that would be my request then, is, is, you know, if we can, if there's an option we can pursue, I would like that. Thank you Jim for that.
Mr. Odell, could, yes, Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just have a question for Jim, and, and this-
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a question for Jim and this regarding the report that's something that's not in here and I just wanted to get clarification on. So if a current homeowner is in the residential district zone as, you know, most of, I would say almost all these Airbnbs would be, are they not violating zoning ordinances currently by engaging in commerce or does this, or does Airbnb rental, is that considered a residential use?
It's probable that they are engaging in commerce and it violates the zoning ordinance.
And then the second question I have is what can be done about the fact that they're violation, violating the zoning ordinance currently?
You could issue a ticket and see whether the court, the court upholds my opinion. Certainly, it doesn't, it doesn't appear to me be, to be, or to meet the definition of a residential use in the residential zoning district we have. It seems to me, and I'd have to look back into the zoning ordinance, that it may violate the conditions of what a family is by definition under the ordinance. When those areas are occupied, although there could be circumstances in which it would be occupied by a family. It also would relate to a number of questions, i.e. what is the extent of the occupancy? And whether or not that occupancy based upon the numbers involved would potentially violate other village ordinances with regard to parking and things of the like. But it's, it's certainly not the typical rental situation where somebody, for example, decides that they've got a property that they want to make a, an income property and they're going to rent it to a family for a year. It's a very different use by nature. So I believe that based on the current standards in the ordinance, it is neither a permitted or a special use and it probably constitutes a violation of the zoning ordinance by the owner of the property.
Correct. So theoretically, right now, anyone engaging in commerce, renting out an Airbnb is, is currently in violation with, of the current zoning ordinances, in your opinion?
That's, yes, I think that that's my position with regard to what the status is of those rentals.
Got it. So I, I think from that perspective, I think is, I, I don't think it's, I think it still makes sense for the zoning committee to look into this further. But I do think, you know, based on that, I do think we do already have some tools in our toolbox to do some things about short term rentals.
Agree. But then we can also look at things like special use embarrasses so that they have to actually come in front of us to get any kind of approval. And then we have a little bit more behind us other than I didn't know.
No, I'm totally tracking. I'm saying, that's why I agree that you
Oh, yeah.
Continue. I, I just wanted to make sure because I wasn't sure if, because leasing to Jim's point, like, you know, and I don't know if there's a differential standard. So say if an Airbnb is rented for four months, does that change to, to really they're just leasing the property versus if they're renting it for five days? Where then that would be commerce or not?
The real underlying issue under the zoning ordinance is whether or not it is a permitted or special use. As the ordinance is currently drafted, it does not appear to be.
So, so does that mean, Jim, that someone who wants to rent their house out as a, not, not in the short term rental consideration, but someone who wants to similarly like an apartment or say, hey, I want to, I bought this house and I'm going to rent it. They shouldn't be renting them?
No, I would not accept that interpretation. I would say that, 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 that is a lawful use of a property in a residential zoning district. Here, when you're renting out a property for a very short period of time, you can run into the kinds of abuses that the village experienced recently over, over on Pickton. You know, you could run into the same abuses if you rent it to somebody for a year, I suppose. But the year seems to me to build into the system a greater probability of stability in the purpose of the rental.
Okay, thank you.
Kind of just ask a follow up question to that, too. So if a current, I believe it's true, and correct me if I'm wrong, that you, once a property owner has a property that's zoned a specific zoning district and they own that property, we can't turn their zoning to be more restrictive? Can we expand their zoning so that we could allow, let's say, for commercial? So if a
By ordinance, yeah, by ordinance, Lee, you can do either. But it requires a text amendment, depending upon what the conditions in the district are.
So you can become more restrictive on, so say my house right now, the village could be more restrictive in terms of zoning. There'd be no issue legally?
Oh, there'd be an issue legally. But, you know, the question is whether or not you've got a right to an existing zoning. And the courts are pretty clear you don't. That a municipality can change the zoning on the property unless you deprive them of what's called a vested right. A vested right is typically a right in law that arises in the context of the reliance on an existing ordinance and the payment of money in support of that permitted use that creates some kind of reliance. That's why sometimes when you see ordinances amended to impose more strict standards, there's a grandfathering position. Because the, the courts have held that the grandfathering position is, in the case of public safety, health, health and welfare ordinances can be sufficient to justify what I'll characterize as, you know, upzoning, where you're increasing the conditions on the use. But that, you have to look at all the facts to see how hopeless the change is and whether or not the owner might be able to claim some kind of vested right. But to have an absolute vested right is clear would deprive a legislative body like the village board of the ability to legislate. The court says you can't do that in an absolute sense.
Got it. Thank you.
David, you wanted to make some clarification? David?
Yeah, sorry. So I guess one thing I, I agree if we can expedite this in any way, I would, I would, I'm in favor of that. I think the other thing that we should do is any language we have, get that in front of the group that's looking at our zoning ordinances right now. My only concern is we're having a group go through a process of rewriting it. We could be writing language that could become out of context of the other parts of our code and zoning ordinances or might be leveraging certain parts that they might be revamping in a way. And so I just think, since this is, it's a sensitive issue, we, we want to move fast on this. We should probably get that in front of the consultants since we've ramped that process back up again as soon as possible. And they might have some insider ideas that we could incorporate early on perhaps. Not sure what their time or capacity looks like, but that's just something I want us to keep in mind. And then the question back and forth with Jim has me kind of just wondering. And I don't need an answer today, but when we actually go to approve or look at language, I'd be interested in either Jim or chief or deputy chief. As far as the three day minimum, I, I like it in principle. I struggle with it in terms of how we follow up because there's not only the property owner that's responsible for that, there's the, the leasing site, be it Airbnb or some other online platform. How can we enforce that? And is it just going to be ticket after ticket? Like, I, I'm just curious, what escalation paths do we have with our current ordinances?
Okay, so you got to look at ordinances in two different ways, David. First, ordinances can act as a deterrent. And then ordinances where there's a violation can act as a attempt to resolve a breach of or a violation of the ordinance. Both of those things are perfectly legitimate from a legal standpoint. I would suggest to you in the context of short term home rentals, the deterrence of the ordinance is going to become a more significant factor than the enforcement of the ordinance after a violation. Because most good citizens don't want to violate an ordinance and as a consequence, if they're aware of the facts, it'll act as a deterrence to the violation of the ordinance. When there's actually a violation, you have to unfortunately wait till the violations occur and then issue a ticket. And then there has to be determination of whether there's sufficient evidence, which will vary in each case as to whether or not the violation has been proven by a preponderance of the evidence. So you can really never look at as any ordinance, whether it's home rule or non-home rule, as a perfect solution or a resolution to an existing problem. It's an effort to deal with a problem, sometimes more effective and sometimes less effective, depending upon the totality of the circumstances. When you write an ordinance, you attempt to look at the totality of the circumstances and write it as you, as best you can in order to be effective. I hope that answered the question.
Yeah, that helps. Thank you.
Mr. Domke?
I just wanted to say the, the exact thing I talked about before the meeting. I had a power outage here and got totally taken off of the Zoom meeting. So I missed out on a lot of it, a lot of the back and forth dialogue. So I just wanted you to know that I came back on, but it was very, very disconcerting.
Bruce?
I, yes. So I, I like David, the idea of maybe bringing in those consultants. So I was thinking that we probably have another committee discussion next week as we kind of look that over. So if possible, if we can get, you know, one of them or someone there to participate, that'd be great to get some ideas and thoughts. If that's, I don't know if they're, how their scope is structured, but if, if possible. If not, then I guess we'll just simply share with them our, the drafts. But I think that'd be a great idea.
Patrick, you have something?
Yeah, so when I take a look at this, this committee reports, I, I'm glad we're having this conversation. I'm glad that things are being written up. But in order to move to the next step, which I know is the next agenda item, I think that we still need a lot of work to be done. Taking a look at this, you know, there's not a lot of information that we'll be able to portray to the citizens in order for them to make an educated decision on the idea of home rule or not. You know, there's, and that's my biggest fear. We really need to make sure that they understand this is more government. This is additional fees and taxes that are being proposed that are a possibility that additional staff time in order to make these things happen. So I really want to make sure that we have all these things discussed and spelled out before we put down the ballot so that we are prepared to be transparent to the residents so that they can make an educated decision on home rule, yes or no.
Wayne?
Well, I would like to say that it's not more government, it's more appropriate government. It's government that's in the hands of Roselle's board and, and basically not Springfield. We can make some things happen that we can't make if we're going to wait for Springfield to enact something. I don't know where this conversation has gone before. But I will say, I, I will say that we're in a new era right now of e-commerce and our police are at a distinct disadvantage in many areas of this area that we live in. So if home rule is, gives us a chance to be like a Bloomingdale or like a Schaumberg or where they're more in control of what's going on, I don't think it's more government. And I, and I think that's a misstatement when you say that because that's, that's a buzzword that's, that's really not true about home rule. And like I said before, home rule has been approved and kept in villages eighty seven percent of the time. So it's not something that's, that's never been thought of by residents. I know that the only thing they think about is it's going to raise taxes. We've already said that should we do something in home rule? We would put in that from the board that we would not raise taxes any more than would be normally done without home rule. So, and the last thing I'd like to say, Patrick, and, and Bruce did that for that, is that we're not in for a money grab here. This is not the, this is not the idea of, of us going for home rule. Our idea, you, you know that our board from way back in two thousand and eight even, with Andy on the board and with Diana Eckert and with Corey Atkinson and Whitman, they, and they were so, they were so frugal with the money. And that same DNA is in the board even to this day. We're not out to get more money from the taxpayers. We're out to do more work for the taxpayers. And the final thing I will say to one thing that was stated is there's never, this never could be more of a community involvement than a referendum on home rule. This is getting the community involved. So that meets with our, 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 our planning for the future.
Next, then Patrick and then Bruce.
So David, David, David was up. Don't, David hit his hand.
Okay. So it was, I thought I saw.
I think I had my hand up first, but go ahead, David.
So I, I just had a question for either Jeff or Jim. I, I know there was additional context that we had shared in the draft forms that both subcommittees saw. I mean, I think there was additional detail that we had there that didn't make the final draft. I don't know, Jeff or Jim, if you wanted to add any of the additional context that were maybe lacking right now in the final document we landed on.
Just from an attorney, yeah, from an attorney standpoint, David, what I can say is my memorandum is subject to attorney client privilege. And until the mayor decides to release it, it remains as such.
Okay. Jeff, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I think what we tried to do to David's point is highlight some of the differences in home rule authority, non-home rule authority. And one of those was the regulation for term rentals. And in my matrix I provided is the difference between registration and licensing. And I think that was one of the topics that both committees have talked about. And I think in this particular memo that I drafted, one of the requests of the home rule subcommittee was to deliberate that issue of licensing versus registration.
Patrick?
So, yeah, I just wanted to comment on, you know, trustee Domke, I'm not going to go back and forth. We could have our difference of opinions. However, we need to keep in mind that it is giving Roselle more government power, whether you, you know, you could spell it out or spin it the way you want. What we have to remember is this board could change. The next election is coming up in April and it's very possible that this board is totally changed. We have new people on here and they could have different objections, objectives of what our current board. We need to understand this and keep this in mind for the future, Roselle. So that's all I wanted to say.
Bruce?
Um, well, you had Lee.
I'm sorry.
No problem. So totally agree with what Patrick's saying in terms of the, the potential for more government. Obviously, it does give us more power if we do have home rule. But again, it's how we use that power or don't use the power. So I, I don't think it automatically means that the power is going to be used, just for clarification. So I think, I think both you guys are right. It definitely does give the village more power. And to Wayne's point, it definitely doesn't mean that it, it actually gets exercised. In terms of transparency, that's the two things that we talked through with Jeff and Jason when David and I met with them. They felt that they had the ability to get a good public information facts out in terms of home rule versus not via webinars, via the opportunity for citizens to ask questions, potentially doing a telephone town hall. And at the end of the day, again, this is clear, we're not for or against home rule. This is simply to give residents the right to vote on what kind of government they want. If they, the government is of, for and by the people and we're giving them the opportunity to give feedback on, and the, the election where the most people participate in the election process in Roselle, which is the reason why we wanted to get that feedback in November. And then the other thing is if future boards come in, to your point, next year, if there's a whole, if there's four new people, home rule could be rescinded by the residents as well. So if there's abuses to home rule, that could be rescinded unless if we get to twenty five thousand people. The other follow up question I had for Jim as well that just came to my mind, because your, your opinion was that these Airbnbs are engaging in commerce, do they not need to collect and remit hotel motel taxes to us?
Not based on the current definitions we have for the motel hotel tax in the motel hotel tax ordinance. So my answer there, Lee, is probably not.
And then can we?
Don't read the ordinance to apply to them.
Can we change the ordinance currently to apply to them to make collection mandatory?
Any, any, any ordinance can be amended as long as it's consistent with what your status is, it's home rule or non-home rule. And as long as the ordinance is rationally based. Those are the, and as long as the ordinance doesn't violate a constitutional precept. So the answer is yes, most of the time you can amend an ordinance. You got to follow proper procedure to do it. You could follow procedure and you see it in many ordinances with other municipalities that they do impose that they do impose fees for the operations of these businesses. So whether that's actually a tax under state law or whether it's a fee is, is a different question. I'd have to look at the state law again, Lee, to determine whether we could impose it as a tax as an, as a non, as a home rule, excuse me, the non-home rule community. But then as far as it being a potential fee for a home rule community, my opinion would be yes, we could. So it all depends, it all depends on the village's status again.
Right, so just for clarity, for a non-home rule community that we, as we currently are, we could potentially have as a fee. But the tax would only be if we're a home rule community?
Well, let me, let me phrase it a little bit differently. As a non-home rule community, if the state statute which allows us to impose a hotel motel tax allows us to impose it on this type of situation, and I don't know whether it does or doesn't, I'd have to study it more.
And I know these are just being sprung on you, so sorry.
Yeah, but, but then if we were home rule, we could impose it as, as a fee or a tax probably.
Got it. So just to summarize, it's to be determined based on your reading of the state law, whether or not that power is clearly articulated by the general assembly. And if it, and if it isn't preempted as a home rule unit of government, we could then collect the hotel motel tax.
Yeah, if the state statute by definition allows us to regulate that as a hotel motel use, then we can do it. But if it doesn't, we can't.
Yep.
And I just, I'm sorry if I'd known that question was coming, Lee, I would have looked at the statutes and tried to have a better answer than that.
No, you're, you're good. I actually just thought of that question about two minutes ago, so. That's why I said, I know I just threw it at you, so just if you could.
It's a good question.
Bruce?
Hey, first for the record, I'd like to be known that I took offense to this inference of us being money grabbers. So especially any one of this on the board, we are extremely prudent and, and judicious in terms of looking at their money. So any inference to that, I personally took offense to. Secondly, I understand, you know, your point, Lee, about rescinding, but that is kind of the fox watching the hen house because we would need to do this exact same actions to get such a thing on the, on a ballot to go ahead and get it rescinded by those residents. So unless the board at that time decides to go down that path of making that on a ballot, the residents don't get a choice.
Just to interject real quick, the residents can petition and get the ballot to, to get a referendum on the ballot with enough signatures, enough legal signatures from electors in the village. They could force it on the ballot. They could force it on the ballot right now.
Absolutely, just like we can almost get enough signatures on our petitions to be elected officials. As you know, that that in itself is a mountain, a mountain to climb just simply to try and get those signatures, let alone something as, as important as this. The other thing I wanted to mention is I'm not against us going forward. I'm just against us going forward at this point. I'm simply looking at the fact that we are doing exactly what we were saying that we're trying to prohibit. We are taking actions without the full input of the residents by putting this onto a ballot and then turning it into a, and oh, by the way, this is here. Now go do something versus what our clear community engagement strategic priority says, and that is to collaborate with our, our, our community, our groups and our residents. And so we went through painstaking town halls, surveys and questionnaires on less important topics. And we are not following even our own strategic direction that we as a board had agreed upon. And so I am simply asking that we go in and defer to we do something as we did with all the other things and have those kinds of engagements ahead of time versus, oh, and by the way, it's on the ballot, you need to make a decision now versus let me inform you and let me follow the process that we laid out under community engagement. And so that is what I was trying to get at with my previous motion of simply deferring until such actions can take place.
Mr. Domke?
So I would like it to go on the record that there was no intent to be blaming anybody on the board for not being austere. What I was trying to say is we have in our DNA, even to this day, with the present members of the board, that we are very frugal with our money and it's not a money grab. And that comment was not made to Bruce. That comment was made to anybody who might be listening in to let them know that this was not one of the incentives to bring up the home rule. The second thing is home rules don't just happen in, 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 in a vacuum. Usually there's a reason why it would be discussed in the first place. We have a very good reason. It happened in June. We should have probably talked about this earlier, but we didn't. So if not now, when? You know, when would you do it? And, and if you were in favor of it in the past, what makes this such a, you know, the wrong time? We probably, we do not want to wait for another incident like that to bring it up again. So I think the triggering event that happened on Picton is a viable reason why you would ask the voters of Roselle if they want home rule or not. And you know what? They could say, no, guys, we don't want it. And to the point also of people coming on the board and changing the rules, hey, they can get voted out pretty quickly if they start doing those kind of things. So there's a lot of safeguards and it's not as, as imposing as you might think. This is the time to ask the residents. And by the way, we didn't have a town hall meeting to do this with residents, but there's been plenty of residents on many of them of multimedia going back and forth on, on, on this incident that happened at Picton and asking what's the board of Roselle going to do? And also neighboring communities are all watching us to see what we're going to do about this incident. This is coming out our way from eastern part of the area and we're going to have to have some tools in our belt to, to address these things. And I think the home rule is one thing that would be very advantageous. I'm not going to argue about it because the last thing I will say is all we're supposed to do in this meeting tonight is vote on whether we should give the Roselle residents a chance to vote in November on this issue. It's not to take a position or anything. It's to basically say, what do you guys think, Roselle? We need, we need you to vote on this because it can't happen otherwise. And besides that, we have no clue as to what Roselle residents want. So let's find out. That's it.
Patrick, I believe you were first this time.
Bruce, Bruce first.
Okay. Bruce?
So my comments to all of that are simply, one, this incident that happened, although it is terrible, is again the knee jerk reaction that I'm trying to avoid. Two, we can address it through ordinances and zoning. In some cases, we even heard about some of the things that Jim had mentioned. Three, the fact that we had a, a similar incident in Irving Park draw no one's attention and we had that even worse case situation because that can be considered a short-term rental just as much because we don't know how long the lease was for those people that were there. And lastly, why didn't anyone raise this as a concern when we had twice as many residents complaining about vehicle stickers? And I heard that one of the situations we brought up in this conversation. So we could have easily have had this exact same conversation back then, but we didn't. And so we're simply addressing something that we don't even know if it's a problem of which we can deal with, with ordinances. I am not saying that we shouldn't put this in front of the residents. I'm just saying we shouldn't do it at this moment till we go through what we as a board have decided on, and that is engaging our, our residents prior to. That's it.
Patrick?
Wanted to go after because I agree with what Bruce had said. The only thing I wanted to add to that is it's not that I'm for or against this. I am this time, want to make sure that we have everything spelled out and is presenting this to the residents in a transparent way. I don't feel we're there. We've done some great discussion. We have some great documentation. We are not to the point where I feel comfortable putting it on a ballot at this time. I understand that there's, there's promise of the town hall and this and that. I want to see this before I vote, yes, we're going to put on the ballot. That's my stance. I didn't say I was for or against it. I'm all for having the residents speak out. I just want to make sure that they are informed of everything that home rule is able to offer and possibly as both pros and cons because they're ours. That's all I had to say.
David?
So I wanted to go back to Bruce's first comment and I really appreciate you sharing that because I think I, I better understand where you're coming from and what you're looking for, and I appreciate that. So it feels to me like it's a chicken and the egg situation where it feels like we either engage the community and then put it on the ballot or we can put it on the ballot and engage the community. And I think that's the main issue here. Is that, can I get a nod, like, am I getting that kind of right from your perspective, Bruce, at least?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you're right. It could, you're right. Either way, the residents have to have some engagement and, and there is no right timing.
A hundred percent agree and I appreciate that. And I, I can, that's something I can understand. And, you know, we might have slightly different feelings on that, but I, I respect that. I think my position then at least is I obviously feel like we have some mechanisms at our disposal. And probably frankly, because of COVID, it's a lot easier for us electronically talk to people. And I think whether we like it or not, zoning ordinance is our reaction. Everything we're doing is a reaction to this event and I think there's attention. And we might be able to have more people pay attention to the conversation now than we might otherwise. And that's speculation. I have nothing to back that up. That's just my personal belief. If we didn't feel ready to put this on the ballot in November, I would rather see us amend the next item to place it on the April agenda so that way the public knows this is something we're moving forward with. And then we have at least seven months to have the conversation dialogue. I think that's appropriate. And if we feel as a board, after hearing the public opinion, we want to move it, then we can absolutely withdraw that petition or that referendum and not submit it to the, the respective boards because we have a lot of time before the municipal election. But my personal belief is, you know, delaying the vote today does not make sense. We owe the residents at least some clarity as far as do we think this is something worth exploring? And whether we put on November or April, I think this is something that the residents need to vote on. And I think at the end of the day, we're not telling anyone whether we should do home rule or not. This is really about getting their opinion. I think frankly, putting something on a ballot that people are going to vote on is the best way we can get the public's opinion. And I think, again, frankly, the nice thing is today, we can record a meeting, share it with people, and so they don't have to be live. And frankly, if we do it in April, COVID is probably still a reality. So large gatherings are probably not going to be permitted. And our ability to have a large, full press thing to inform residents is going to be restricted to electronics. So I don't know how much informing people changes besides maybe we have more time. But I would argue December's out, November's out. So we're down to maybe having four months instead of three months now. That's really the only difference between me between November and April. But I think it's important enough that we at least agree to maybe put something on the ballot. So that's just my, my two cents in this situation.
I, and I think, thank you, David. Sorry for not raising my hand, Andy, but it, I, I agree, we, we need to put it on the ballot. I just don't think it's the November ballot. And, and that's the best way we can get the residents. And by us taking the initiative of informing and engaging them doesn't appear as if we're forcing our hand. You have to make a decision in less than the time that I think is appropriate to give them awareness and engagement. And, and you're right, we can take September, October, November, and, and even to some degree, September or December. But we have the time to get them engaged. We have the time to get the understanding. And then based on that, we can make and help the decision where the direction we want to go. But I just, that's my reaction of the knee jerk piece of we're trying to make this happen so quickly and we're not giving the time and adequate engagement model that I think is necessary for such as an important decision as this. So thank you for, for summarizing that for me, David.
Okay. Is there anybody else?
I've got one more thing.
Please, Lee.
Just to echo David's points, Bruce, I definitely see where you're coming from. I think for me, one of the, or two comments, I would say, like the distinction in terms of the engagement model. I think the key difference for me at least is that typically when we engage the public, we get their feedback and then this board is the final decision maker versus we give community engagement after we allow this to get on the ballot and they're the ultimate decision maker. And, and quite frankly, if we don't do the job in terms of communicating facts out to the public in terms of what is home rule mean and what it doesn't mean, most people are going to vote no. They don't know what this, like something on the ballot is, they're not going to vote yes. So they're going to vote no on it. And to me, I think, I think based on Jeff's comments in terms of him believing he can have something together for the public and David's comments too, that we could record a, you know, video, put it on YouTube, let the residents watch it whenever they want. We can have frequently asked questions. Like I said, I think there's time to do the dialogue. And then the other thing too, to Patrick's point in terms of potentially opening up more government, that's why I would rather have it on a presidential race is because there's more people to turn out and you have more opinions versus a lower turnout municipal rate. So I, I would actually be opposed to having it on any municipal election.
Bruce?
Yeah, and, and so, so Lee, thank you then also. But I guess what I was looking at is that if we focus and have the, the fact that we want to get this engaged and we run the risk of, of no's, why wouldn't we want to take the time to educate? And potentially because there are benefits to home rule. I see those. I understand that. So if we take the time to educate and we take the time to get them comfortable with the situation so that things like, oh, we're just going to overtax and all the rest of it that, you know, you hear, then we have a better chance for success if that's the direction we want to go. And so that's where I'm trying to get them engaged and inform, inform them more, with more time so they don't feel like we're trying to rush it and push it down their throat. And then to the point of the number of, of people, you know, a mayoral election would be ideal simply from the standpoint of we want this to be focused on the community at hand. And so when they have something like that, they're not going to be detracted by all the rest of the hoopla that's going on. We're focusing on the election for a community and that community could be on the mayor election. And this is a specific vote for that, for that community.
Just to respond to that, I think to your point about education, that's why when we initially talked, and, and when we initially talked through this with Jeff, it sounded like we were all in alignment that we had enough time to inform the public. And again, speaking for myself, we're saying that we're not necessarily saying that we want this or we don't want it. We're asking what the public wants. So in terms of trying to get a probability of success higher, to me, I just, I would rather prioritize getting more people that live here giving their feedback. So I think through all the technology that we have, like I said, with YouTube, with all these different tools that we have, we could get enough information. E-News, YouTube, Zoom, we could use all these different tools to get information out to the public. That's just my point of view.
Is there anybody else?
Can I ask one more question? Sorry. Can I ask one more question to Jim?
Yes, go ahead.
So it's my understanding that the village board could only put on the ballot every, if, if home rule failed in November, we could only do this every two years. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And then the follow-up question to that is can residents petition to add home? So let's say it fails in November, can residents petition to have it on, in, on the April ballot? Since it's a citizen-driven initiative?
Unclear, but my opinion would be yes.
Got it. Thank you.
You know, I just wanted to say too, that I did see now Bruce and Patrick's point of view. And, you know, quite frankly, this is a great conversation because we've explored all of the, the different features of home rule and whether it should or shouldn't be. And also the fact that we can do this zoning even now. We don't have to wait for an arrival of home, of home rule. So, you know, everything that's been discussed today is important. And I, I'm glad that people are able to watch how we interact. So I do see both points of view. I'm, I'm more anxious because of what happened very close to my house. It wasn't that apartment building at Spring Hill and Irving. It was at Picton and Roselle Road, which is close to me. So I guess I'm a little more emotional about it and I've heard more from more people because I live amongst the people that it happened in their neighborhood. So good conversation. Thank you for that.
Anybody else? Looks like Jeff. Jeff?
I just wanted to make sure from staff's direction, Open Meetings Act, what we're to consider here, if the board, whatever they decide with the home rule question on the ballot on November 3rd, that staff is to work with the village board concurrently on zoning text amendments and work through the village board in the public hearing process that way. Jim, as I recall in December of last year, On zoning text amendments and work through the village board in the public hearing process that way. Jim, as I recall, in December of last year. We use the village board to do a public hearing and then approved a prohibition text amendment to the cannabis business. So I'm assuming under that same circumstance here that we can work with the village board on a zoning text amendment. Hold the the public hearing through the village board and then approve whatever the board decides.
That's correct.
So am I to assume then, Andy and the board, that staff is to work with the village board or a subcommittee of the village board concurrently on some. Uh, a text amendment to the zoning ordinance that reflects whatever the board's going to decide with regard to regulating short term rentals.
Absolutely, Jeff. I would like you to work with the committee that is doing the zoning end of it now to get that underway as soon as possible. So for whatever the decision is on the next portion here, that is already in progress.
Okay.
And. And sorry, Jeff, and if I can, uh, if it's okay with you, Andy, you know, uh, maybe we expand the committee by simply adding um. The chair of the zoning board. To to.
That could violate the open meeting.
Okay, thanks, Jim. I wasn't sure because.
Could violate the open meeting deck.
If it, okay, thank you. I wasn't sure, but then then skip that. We'll continue down the path and hopes for the.
I can continue doing the staff members and everything that are involved, but when I when I do, uh, an appointed or two elected officials. That are sitting on a board violates the open meeting. David, you had something to say?
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind indulging me, I'd just be curious before we move to the next item, because if I'm correct in my parliamentary procedure, uh, if it does fail, we finish, we do not consider anything more. Could we just do a poll as far as how people feel about November versus April? If the majority sides in April, I'm personally in favor of November, but if the majority of the board is April, I prefer we amend that. So that way we can be more productive with our time following this item.
Okay, let me uh just.
Before you do that, Jeff, were you finished? Because I think you think you were leading towards. A deadline, and I think that what I'm looking for, and I'm hoping you're as well, is that this this tax amendment is available at the twenty fourth meeting.
Um, but again, that could be for board consideration, Jim, like a committee of the whole, but clearly, uh, we would have to have a public hearing.
Yes, you have a public hearing, number one, and number two. Having done a substantial amount of research related to these ordinances and looking at ordinances that are. Um, available nationwide, and there are a number of them. And what's interesting when you read those is that, you know, the needs of a different community are handled differently in those ordinances. If you've got a community that is uh, what I would characterize as a vacation community, their home rule, I mean, their uh. Uh, short term rental ordinance is going to look very, very different uh than a bedroom community like Rozelle's. Although if you wanted to, you could make them look the same, but I'm just telling you. The the it it generally comes out differently. Um, and you know, I expressed concern. The very first time we talked about this, about not having sufficient time to consider all home rule considerations. My question here is, um. Should that same analysis apply to this short term rental ordinance? Or because of the nature of the problem, do you want to get to it as quickly as possible, uh, regardless of whether it's explored in a more thorough fashion?
And I the answer I would give is that in ordinances are far easier to. Rescind and change. I don't need to get a populace of people to put something on a ballot. I don't need to get. A a series of of voters to gather on yes or no. It is a decision that is then done by the board. So. My opinion would be is we have some ideas and some thoughts that we can bring back. If that means that it's a committee as a whole, so be it. But I would like to make that move a little faster than um. Than any of the other uh alternatives.
All right, here's what I'd like to do. I would like to take that poll. Um, I I will tell you right now, in in my opinion, um. I believe for our next item that we would be rushing it. Um, I I want to compliment both boards for all the material they have brought forward and to staff and working with them, what they have brought. There are many ways of doing it. My initial thing was how we can handle this as immediately as we possibly could. If we put this on the referendum, we still have to get it approved. So how far is that putting us out? Okay, so I would rather educate our the population. So they can make an an a good decision when we call for it. And find out what we are really doing, but have something have something in place right now to handle the immediate. Uh, situation. So and what would expedite that would be in in our zoning ordinances. So right now, if I would ask. If we should um move this out to the April election. If um, I I want to go down the down the list. Uh, on the statement I just made, and I, like I said, I would rather put it out there for the public. To be knowledgeable about what home rule really is and have them make an honest, true decision and not have to guess at it. Wayne, what would you say? April, yes or no?
Um, I would, I would prefer to do it now while the uh like. Strike while the iron's hot. I think if April comes and we have other issues, I think it'll basically fall by the wayside as it has fallen by the wayside. For years and years before this.
So you want it now, no way.
I I would prefer it now. I understand the logic of waiting till April, and of course, that would be my second. Choice, but my first choice would be to do it now before another tragedy happens.
Okay. Well, we can still handle that with ordinances. All right, Patrick?
I a hundred percent agree with your statement. That's what I've been asking from the get go. I would like to extend this to April, and I think that's the appropriate thing to do.
Okay, Barb?
I would extend to April also.
Okay.
It will give us more time.
Lee?
I say November. I think I I appreciate your comments. I think given Jeff's feedback in terms of him thinking that we could give enough. Um, information to the public prior to the November election, I would stick with November. Again, it keeps more. Of the residents here, the opportunity to provide their voice.
Bruce?
I have been advocating for deferral. I would go and support April.
Okay, David?
My first choice would be November, but I uh also agree, though it's important to commit to it. So I'm willing to consider April as well. So I would be happy to make that motion to amend. The next item to change it from the November third, twenty twenty election to the April sixth, twenty twenty one election.
I'll second that. Thanks, David. I agree.
Okay, Madam Clerk, can I have a?
A real call. Mayor, mayor, this was just a discussion. So what you would do is close the discussion and then move on to item six eight two.
Alrighty, then let's uh. Close the discussion and next on our agenda is six eight two, consider the adoption of a resolution providing for a submission to the electorals of the Rozelle, DuPage, Cook Counties. A a referendum of whether the village should become a home role unit on the November election.
Well, are we amending it or are we are we?
Well, I'm asking.
Voting.
Somebody asked.
Oh, there's a question. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to adopt that uh resolution, and I believe we have to second it, and then we have to do a motion to amend, correct, Jim?
That that's correct, because the it's presented on the agenda as November. Somebody can make a motion to amend, but you have to make the motion of the underlying motion first.
Right, so so moved.
And I would like to make a motion to amend.
There's got to be a second before we move on.
Oh, I thought, okay, Andy just proposed it.
Yeah, you. So you're seconded, Bruce?
Yeah, but the mayor can't make a motion.
David, David.
It is to be made by a member of the board. And just so you know, guys, I've got ten percent battery on my phone here.
The good thing we're finishing this.
Internet was working until about five minutes before the meeting, and now with the power outage down here, it's out. So I got ten percent left in my battery, and then I'm I'm toast.
Okay, so let's, all right, so I have a I have a first and a second.
Well, we don't have seconds. I do not have a second.
Can can we be clear? I want to be very clear, though. I'll make the second, but the second is to amend the.
No.
I'm going to ask for discussion.
Okay.
Okay, so who made the motion? I'll sec- I'll second it. All right, Wayne, discussion.
Hey, I would like to make a motion to amend. Six. Eight two to change from November to April election.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Okay, that's the motion on the table now.
Okay, any discussion? And what, yes.
I have a question for Jim. Is this too early to pass this for the April election?
No.
Um, if it is, it'd be a void act anyway, and we'd have to come back to it. So I can't tell you right off the top of my head, Lee, but it might be. So I I'd need to look at the statute tomorrow to give any answer to that. But if you make the motion and it can't do it because we don't have statutory authority because we're not home rule. Then we bring it back.
Got it.
Anybody else?
I don't thi- I don't think it's a problem to do it now. You know, I think the statute says at least ninety days before the election.
Yeah, no, that's why I was wondering. Sometimes they say, you know, ninety to a hundred eighty days or whatever, because.
Yeah, I don't believe it says that.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Have a roll call.
Trustee Berkshire.
To be amended, yes.
To amend to the amendment.
Yes.
Yes.
This is going to put it on the ballot for April?
Yes.
No, this is, this is just voting on if we're okay with changing it, right?
Yeah, this is just, this votes on the amendment. I'm sorry, it votes on the amendment.
Trustee Devitt.
Aye.
Trustee Poleski.
Aye.
Trustee Sarno.
Aye.
Trustee Trejo.
Yay.
Trustee Donkey.
At least it would be on the ballot for April. Is that what I'm voting on?
You're voting if you're okay with changing it to April versus November.
With with the board being in favor of it, as we should move forward, I would vote yes.
Okay. And our motion is carried to continue it to and get more information to the April.
Well, I think.
Okay, so now the amended motion is on the table. So now you vote on the amended motion.
Okay. So.
So so. David, I think, are you going to make the mo- who's going to make the?
It's already it's already been made, so we just have to.
Already on the table now. It's on the table now. All you have to do is um say um, uh, mayor calls the vote on the motion to change the date. Uh, to the April date for the referendum.
Right.
Okay, trustee Poleski.
Aye.
Trustee Donkey.
Yeah.
Trustee Sarno.
Aye.
Trustee Berkshire.
Yes.
Trustee Devitt.
Aye.
And trustee Trejo.
I'll I'll vote I, but I do want to reflect again that I would rather have more of the residents participate in this election as it's such a weighty issue.
Okay. Yep. All right, and our motion is carried. Okay. Moving along, adopt the resolution extending the declared of a local state of emergency approved by the village board on January or July, sorry, thirteenth, two thousand twenty.
Move.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, a roll call, please.
Trustee Devitt.
Aye.
Trustee Donkey.
Aye.
Trustee Sarno.
Aye.
Trustee Berkshire.
Yes.
Trustee Poleski.
Aye.
Trustee Trejo.
Aye.
And motions carried, like to uh ask for an ordinance to pass. I'd like to ask for an ordinance to pass. An ordinance ratifying the mayoral uh. Executive order during the declared of the local state of emergency.
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Devitt.
Aye.
Trustee Trejo.
Aye.
Trustee Berkshire.
Yes.
Trustee Poleski.
Aye.
Trustee Donkey.
Aye.
Trustee Sarno.
Aye.
Okay, and our motion is carried. That is all I have. Uh, village trustees, anybody have anything to report?
Got one quick thing, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Lee.
So just talking to Tom earlier today, I know one of the things I proposed a while back was to give up an enhanced refund in terms of the trade permits. So I just wanted to give the board an update on that. Um, net net, the differential that we gave back basically by allowing people to turn in permits and backdating it to April first. Um, cost about ten thousand four hundred dollars. So a hundred thirty three permits have been returned. We sell four hundred eleven permits. But again, no matter what, they were eligible to get refunds. So if they turned it in in July, they would have gotten, you know, a reef or June, they would have gotten the rest of the year anyways. So net net, it was about ten thousand four hundred dollars.
Okay, thank you for for Mr. Donkey. What did you have?
Yeah, I wanted to show you guys, if you haven't seen this, this is what um is being given out to new residents. So the village has been working with Rozelle Sister Cities. Uh, and we put in coupons from merchants. We had about forty different merchants that are putting coupons in these bags. And for the last three months, it's been deferred because of the pandemic. But now we have a hundred and fifty four new residents that will receive these welcome bags. Uh, with uh all the information about Rozelle and the the merchants that that wanted to advertise their business. So it's a very popular movement. That uh, we're very happy that the village is is working with us to help us to do this. And uh, should you ever hear anything about it, let us know because uh, we're doing a lot of work in that regard. And Patty, thank you for. For you and Karen giving us all that information that we need to do this.
Well, from the village board and all of us, thanks to the Sister Cities for doing that.
We're having fun. We're having fun. Yeah.
Hey, Wayne, real quick, how are those being distributed?
Well, uh, we we have different uh people from our group and they they hang them on the doorknobs.
Okay.
Uh, and then if there's a a multi unit, we write on the unit number on the bag so that they get it. And of course, of course, we're sanitizing and everything now in the new normal, so.
Okay, good to know. Thanks.
Good thing. Yeah. Thank you.
All right, anybody else? Village clerk?
New report.
Village attorney?
No report, Mr. Mayor. I'm 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 down to four percent.
We get a discount?
It's plugged in, but I don't see what's going on, so we'll see.
Do we do we get a discount if your battery dies?
All right. But you know, my time on the clock, Lee, ends when it ends. So if the battery comes out, I'm off the clock.
Let's get to the consent agenda then.
Let's do it.
Okay, so tonight, Mr. Mayor, on the consent agenda, we have presentation and approval of village board minutes of July twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty. The adoption of a resolution authorizing the amendment of the services agreement, protect technology support services. And the adoption of a resolution authorizing a contract for the two twenty twenty sanitary manhole lining program, the amount of a hundred and fifty six thousand eight hundred and eighty seven dollars. And there's nothing further on the consent agenda.
Hey, can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll move.
Second. Hi, Jim.
Madam Clerk. Roll call, please.
Trustee uh Devitt.
Aye.
Trustee Trejo.
Aye.
Trustee Donkey.
Aye.
Trustee Berkshire.
Yes.
Trustee Sarno.
Aye.
Trustee Poleski.
Aye.
Okay, and our motion is carried. Uh, village ministry, you you had a reporter or did not have a report, sir?
Report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Chamber of Commerce liaison, anything to report?
Good evening, Mayor. On behalf of the Rozelle Chamber of Commerce, just a reminder that August twenty sixth, starting at ten thirty AM, is our annual golf outing. And the availability of raffle prizes is out there for anybody who's not able to to attend the event. Please see the website to be uh able to uh purchase raffle tickets and see the different prizes. That is all. I'll be up at the Chamber of Commerce.
Moving on to our regular agenda, under community development, David, fortunately, we have nothing for you this evening. Under administration, Barb?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. authorize the village administrator to approve the renewal of a backup and data recovery. Solution for the village's information technology network in the amount of. Twenty nine thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars from Unitrends.
Twenty three thousand.
Twenty three thousand, sorry, twenty three thousand nine seventy from Unitrends.
Second.
Any discussion?
You missed it. How did we miss that? Is that the one where we didn't? We didn't know about that one, or what was the story on that, Jason?
Yeah, the last renewal was three years, so we looked back and doing the IT budget, uh, which is still a newer fund. We kind of looked backwards at some purchases and it just. Was an oversight that it wasn't included in this year.
Yeah, okay.
Madam Clerk?
Trustee Sarno.
Aye.
Trustee Devitt.
Aye.
Trustee Domkey.
Aye.
Trustee Berkshire.
Yes.
Trustee Poleski.
Aye.
Trustee Trejo.
Aye.
And our motion is carried. Anything else this evening? Trustee Sarno?
Nothing else to report.
Thank you. Under fire, Patrick, we have nothing for you. Under police, we have nothing for you. Okay. Public works, Mr. Brookshire.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I apologize for rushing the earlier part of the agenda. But now that we are on in public works, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution ratifying an emergency purchase in the amount of $10,900. To Dom Mechanical Industries, Inc. for gas service repairs at the Devlin wastewater treatment plant.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam clerk, if you would, please.
Trustee Berkshire.
Yes.
Trustee Trejo.
Aye.
Trustee Sarno.
Aye.
Trustee Domkey. Uh, trustee Poleski.
Aye.
And.
Devitt, aye.
Trustee Devitt. Sorry.
And our motion is carried. Anything else, Bruce?
Nothing more, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Under finance, Mr. Trejo, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the accounts payable list for August 10th, 2020 in the amount of $836,035 and 27 cents.
Second.
Any discussion on the bills list? Can I have a roll call, madam clerk?
Trustee Trejo.
Aye.
Trustee Devitt.
Aye.
Trustee Domkey.
abstain.
Trustee Berkshire.
Yes.
Trustee Sarno.
Aye.
Trustee Poleski.
Aye.
And our motion is carried. Okay. Anything else, Mr. Trejo?
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Sir, any other business? Okay. Executive session? We still got an attorney with us?
Yes, I'm still here.
Okay.
Second, any, uh, roll call vote?
No, we just need you.
The purpose of the executive.
Like an action.
I'll make a motion to go to executive session.
Thank you.
All right.
I'm sorry, who is the second?
I'll take that.
Purpose of the executive session is to discuss collective bargaining with Matt Local 258.
In a roll call, please.
Trustee Trejo.
Aye.
Trustee Devitt.
Aye.
Trustee Sarno.
Aye.
Trustee Berkshire.
Yes.
Trustee Domkey.
Aye.
And trustee Poleski.
Aye.
Okay. And I, um, I, before I ask for adjournment. Um, I would like to thank everybody for their, for their discussion this evening. Um, I want to congratulate both committees on the fine job you did do and how you presented. So now can I ask for adjournment?
And Mayor, the record should reflect that no, um, final actions anticipated with regard to the executive session.
Alrighty.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn and have Jim turn his cellphone off in charge.
Well, I'm going to be, I'm going to leave it on here. I'm going to try to connect. I don't know whether I'll do it or not, but if you don't hear me, uh, in the next couple of minutes, it means it didn't work.
All right. Motion.
Two percent left.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Sorry, who made the second?
Patrick or David?
Uh, they, David added this time.
Okay. Trustee Trejo.
Aye.
Trustee Poleski.
Aye.
Trustee Devitt.
Aye.
Trustee Berkshire.
Yes.
Trustee Sarno.
Aye.
Trustee Domkey.
Aye.
Have a nice evening.
Okay.